If we could, I would be saying.
Overall, that was sick.
All right, if I can, let me get over, order over the chambers, please.
Can you come get this?
All right, if I can, we're gonna go ahead and start. If you can take your seats, please.
She said, "I'm gonna choke you out."
I got it. All right, here we go.
Yeah, so, don't make me use my outdoor voice, please. I'm just kidding. All right. Hello, welcome everybody to the council meeting on, let me get my spectacles here. On 13 January, so we'll call this meeting to order and for our invocation, we have Pastor Louis Hunley to do our invocation.
Thank you. Bow your heads. Lord, I just thank you so much for the opportunity just to be here tonight. I thank you for this council. I thank you for this incredible community in which they serve. I thank you for the people of this community, for all of the hardworking, for all of the smart people of this community, and the wonderful families that live here. I just ask that you just help us just to remember how we can serve them. I just pray for all of the people in our community who do serve, for all of our police, for all of our firemen, for all of our emergency responders, and the medical community. I just thank you and I pray that you'll just help us to know how we can support them, how we can get them the training that they need so that they can continue to make this just a wonderful place to live. I pray for our schools. I pray that they'll continue just to be outstanding examples of, of the kind of education that we want our kids to have. And I pray for all those people that are doing that for our kids. Lord, I just lift up our churches in this community as they help each of us grow to be better people. Lord, I especially list up the leadership of this community, and particularly for this council. I pray for wisdom, I pray for direction, as they consider issues that are important to the community. I pray that you'll just give them, or continue to give them, a servant's heart, and I thank you so much for them. I thank you again for this community, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, if you'll follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, on my nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far off.
All right. Thank you. Can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Here.
Council President Seifert.
All right, I am here. And next, we'll do amendments to the agenda. I do have one. I'd like to walk on archiving of the previous work session that was recorded, having that archived officially, so I don't know if we wanna put that under my item. We can do that there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, are there any other amendments? No? Okay. All right. I'll be honest, I don't know what was, I don't remember what was done on December 30th, so, but I know we're changing kind of our path going forward and how we're doing things, so I just kinda wanna remind public, it's a, you know, official meeting, we're trying to conduct official business, so we wanna hear your dialogue, we wanna hear your comments, public comments section, as well as public hearings. Welcome to come up, speak at the DIAS. Would ask that you speak, give us your district name and/or address, whatever you feel free there to do, but would ask that you address your comments to me. Council will not enter in dialogue with you, address them to me, we'll gather them. If there are questions, comments, we'll get that to city clerk, who then will make sure that we get the right city staff to help answer those, as well as with the mayor's support in doing those things. One thing I will ask, though, as we're adjourning, please, just don't, like my terms, let us get our stuff done, get our stuff put up, and we wanna talk to you, but let us get our stuff put up, we'll come down to you. That way, we've got everything, and we're not sitting there thinking of five or six different things that we gotta do before we close up, and we're not giving you maybe a due time and, and attention that, that you deserve. So, I will say the other thing is, let's be respectful in here of everyone. Be respectful of you, you be respectful of us. It's just, it's a professional meeting, and if, you know, we'll conduct ourselves in a certain, certain manner, and if we don't, then we'll, we'll cross that bridge when and if we get there. So, okay. So, all that being said, we'll move into the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Epstein.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Stein.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, so next, we're gonna enter into presentation and awards, and the mayor is, in honor of our previous work session, he's throwing me a curveball, and he has something of a surprise here that he wants to present, and so, mayor floor is yours.
So, it has to be pretty important for me to get in front of presentations where Debbie Overcash is speaking next, but it is. So, Ms. Betty Fletcher, if you'd come up here with me, please, one of the things you guys will find out, as Ms. Betty walks up here, is, one of the strengths of Madison is the boards and committees that we have. There's solid people in this community for years and years and years that have been helping us, as a mayor and council, manage what we do. One of the things we have is a zoning board of appeals, which isn't utilized often, but when it is, it's pretty darn important to whoever utilizes it. And this young lady right here has been on that board for 24 years. So, the first thing I would like to help you with, as you retire, and I don't know what you're gonna do, but we have a resolution from the zoning board of adjustments that they all have signed, and they wanna thank you for your incredible service, for what you've done, and so I wanna give that one to you first, and we'll get a picture, if we can. All right. Because as importantly, as a mayor and a council, one thing that we have is our city coin. And to me, as we give things out, it's probably the most important thing that we give, is telling someone from our city, from our mayor, our council, our employees, and, and our, and our citizens, "Thank you." So, on behalf of the entire city, we have this front and back of our city coin, and it simply reads, "In grateful appreciation for 20 year, 24 years of dedicated service to the zoning board of adjustments and appeals and other volunteer efforts that have positively impacted the city of Madison. You're very special, we very much appreciate you. This is an honor for me to give this to you. Thank you, Ms. Betty."
Good evening, and this was a surprise. They don't do that very often in Madison, I'm told. So, I really feel, feel special tonight, and I have to say this, it's not related to the acceptance, but for the last 30 days, I've been wearing a hard monitor, and I got to take it off yesterday, and I'm glad, they may have been coming in. Something's going on with the get tour, okay? But thank you so much for this recognition, and I also thank you for the opportunity to serve. I really did not know it had been quite that long, but I did know that it had been almost at least 20 years, but I didn't know it had been that close to 25 years. But again, I really appreciate the confidence and the honor that was given me, and we had some very difficult cases, but in our committee, and I served with several different groups, and I appreciate all of the support they gave me, but in some of the cases were really rough, but we always tried to treat everybody who came before us with respect and dignity. And even though we couldn't always say yes, we wanted them to feel good about themselves, because in order for us to serve the city well, we also wanted the citizens who came before us to be satisfied, and to felt that we deal, and to feel that we did listen to them, and we did everything we could. We had the support of staff, and they are amazing, so there's, there were some things that they did to please our citizens and still stay within the rules and procedures that we had to follow. So, just thank you for allowing me to serve for so many years.
Thank you, Ms. Betty.
All right, with that, we'll continue on with presentations and awards, and first up is Ms. Overcash with the Madison Christmas Parade Awards. You may do anything you'd like, ma'am. Maybe. Maybe. You can do anything you want to, once.
You okay?
You gotta turn the mic to me. You don't have to pull the mic to you. I know you, I know you can speak out, though.
I've got it here. Hi, everyone, I'm Debbie Overcash, president of the Madison Station Historical Preservation Society. Thank you, Mayor Finley and council, for allowing us the time to recognize several wonderful holiday events in Madison this year. The Preservation Society is so pleased to partner with the city on both the Polar Express Christmas Tree Trail and the Christmas Capers. Thank you so much. In addition, tonight, I also have the great honor of awarding the Madison Christmas Parade Awards. Up first this evening, the sixth reenactment of a wonderful Madison tradition begun by Doc Hughes in the late 1920s, the Madison Christmas Capers. The capers were held on Saturday, December 14th, on Main Street, and saw our largest attendance to date. As usual, Larry and Walt Anderson, Doc Hughes' grandsons, have a big time warming the crowds up from the roof of Hughes Drugstore, the site of the original Christmas capers. This year, they were joined on the roof by their grandchildren. The Andersons kick off this one-of-a-kind event by throwing candy and moon pies to the crowd, then the chickens start flying. Thank you to Mayor Finley and Councilwoman Karen Denzine for joining the fun. In addition, our heartfelt thanks to the Madison City Community Orchestra for entertaining us with beautiful Christmas carols, to the Rotary Club of Madison for serving hot chocolate and cookies, and to Todd Phillips, who each year volunteers his time and talent so that we can all hear. These fine folks have joined us all six years of the capers and have committed their support in 2025. Thank you all. So, a big drumroll here. The combined value of the chickens this year was over $3,500, to include a $500 flight voucher from Huntsville International Airport. A huge thank you to the very generous 35 businesses who make this event so very special. We're looking forward to the 2025 Christmas Capers. Hope you all plan to join us and bring your friends with you. Up next, the 2024 Madison Polar Express Christmas Tree Trail was lit by Mayor Finley on the evening of Friday, December 6th. With a record 80 stunningly beautiful trees, this again was our largest Christmas tree trail to date. Again, Historic Society is so happy to partner with the city of Madison, who flew Santa in from the North Pole just for that evening. Thank you again to the Rotary Club of Madison, who served hot chocolate and cookies, to Madison Visionary Partners, who turned the pedestrian walkway into a fantastic wintery, snowy wonderland, to the Madison Chamber of Commerce for a lively children's glowstick parade, to our Madison Public Library for, I think, Paul, the most animated reading of the Polar Express yet, to Lisa Thomas and her staff in the city clerk's office, to our Madison Police Department for keeping us safe at each and every event, to County Commissioner Steve Haraway for his generous use of his electronic signs, and last, but certainly not least, to Kelly Johnson and our very own Madison Parks and Rec Department. Without you, this Madison magic would not happen. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you all so much. Mayor Finley, if you'll join me down front? Our judges had quite a time this year, every tree was so beautiful. Tonight, we are pleased to announce the winning trees for 2024. When the award is announced, if the representative of each group will join Mayor Finley down front, we'd love to congratulate you and get a picture. If Colin Richardson will join us, please. This is Colin's first year participating in the Christmas Tree Trail, and he's a big winner. Mr. Weed's Gardening is the winner of the 2024 Mayor's Choice Award. Congratulations, Colin. If Melinda Sanders will join us up front, please. Filthy Gorgeous on Main is the winner of the 2024 Merry and Bright Showstopper Award. If Kim Shaw will join us up front, please.
You got a vote?
Not.
Southern Scape is the winner of the 2024 Holly Jolly Most Holiday Inspired Award. Congratulations. Congratulations to our 2024 winners, and our heartfelt thanks to all 80 participating individuals, nonprofits, and businesses for helping to make our Madison Main Street truly a destination during the 2024 holidays. Now, on to the parade. The 2024 Madison Christmas Parade, All Be Home for Christmas, skillfully coordinated by Madison Parks and Rec, went off without a hitch on Saturday, December 14th, with 47 groups, organizations, and businesses participating. The streets were lined with paradegoers eagerly anticipating this very longtime Madison tradition. The winning entries are here with us this evening. If a representative or representatives from each group would please join Mayor Finley when your organize, organization is called. The winner of the Merry and Bright Award goes to American Legion Post 229.
About auxiliary here, auxiliary, Pam Rogers and myself, thank you very much.
The winner of the Holly Jolly Award goes to Midtown Baptist Church. The Committee Choice Award goes to Girl Scouts of North Central Alabama Service Unit 212.
I hope that you guys won.
Good job, guys. Get close to the mayor, there you go. We've got some mamas. Congratulations. You get to keep it, that's yours, sweetie. Thank you to all the participants, and congratulations to our 2024 award winners. And now, we have one very, one more last, very special thank you tonight. If Melissa Kane would join Mayor Finley and me up front, please. Melissa is an outstanding Madison volunteer who not only co-chairs the ever-growing teen area of the Madison Street Festival, but also each year selflessly donates her time and huge talent to the Historic Society and the city by imagining and developing each of the Madison Christmas Capers, Polar Express, and Roundhouse Open House Flyers, as well as the overall Madison City Christmas Event Flyer. Melissa also develops all fillable registration forms, hold harmless forms, and the Polar Express signage. Melissa volunteers many, many hours after her regular eight-to-five job to ensure that Madison's Christmas and holiday event flyers and paperwork are the utmost professional, innovative, informative, eye-catching, and fun product for the Historic Society and our sweet city. On a very personal note, thank you, dear friend, for sharing your time, your talent, and your enormous gifts with us. I so appreciate you so much, Melissa. We have a little thank you from the Historic Society.
Let's give, no, no, Debbie, let's give Debbie and her team a huge round of applause for all that they have done.
Thank you, Mayor. We're looking forward to continuing to grow these wonderful Madison events, now Madison traditions, into 2025 and beyond. We wish you all a happy, healthy, and very safe 2025. Thank you all.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Ms. David. All right, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, so with that, we're gonna move into, I think, our last presentation award, which is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing Madison, Madison American Legion Post 229, for being recognized by the North Alabama Veterans Fraternal Organization Coalition as Veteran Organization of the Year.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Proclamation.
Proclamation of support, Madison American Legion Post 229. Whereas the Madison American Legion Post 229 has been recognized by the North Alabama Veterans Fraternal Organization Coalition as Veteran Organization of the Year, and whereas the North Alabama Veterans Fraternal Organization Coalition represents more, over 60 veteran-related organizations across North Alabama, and whereas the Coalition selects annually a veterans organization for outstanding service to our community, veterans, and our families, whereas the Coalition selected the Madison American Legion Post 229 for the 2024 Award of Veterans Organization of the Year. That's pretty awesome.
Yes.
That's pretty awesome. Whereas Madison American Legion Post 229 provides numerous programs to our community veterans and their families, to include ceremonial honor guard for deceased veterans, the annual Memorial Day Ceremony, visits to senior veterans, U.S. Constitution Oracle Contest, veterans retreats, along with sponsorship of youth programs and organizations such as Boy State, American Legion Baseball, JROTC, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and Girl States too, even though it's not mentioned here. Now therefore, I
Paul Finley.
Mayor of
Mayor of the City of Madison, along with our city council, hereby recognize the Madison American Legion Post 229 for those achievements. We'd ask you to give a big round of applause for all of this.
Anybody that's a member of the post, could you please come on?
And we have 400 members and not just these two. They make it work.
Actually, I'm a member too, my auxiliary. But how about what you did on the national level? Would you like to share with that? What y'all, the honors you got at national level?
Yes, we did. As a matter of fact, the auxiliary did. It was Gene Downs, as we won one of just two or three National American Legion Auxiliary Awards for being recognized for all the services they provided our communities' veterans. That was a very big award for us to win nationally, because there's about 1,500 auxiliary posts with auxiliary units throughout the United States. So we're very, very fortunate to be able to pull that off, and it's from the hard work, of course, these auxiliary members. So yes, it was a very big achievement. All right. Sure.
Get in here, Dan. So Dan's one of our executive, he's our executive committee man. And Gene there with the red jacket? She's the vice commander. So thank you. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
All right. Thank y'all. It's always a good evening when we have a few presentations and awards to do, and especially with Mayor, with you leading off with Ms. Fletcher there. That was really cool. So, all right. With that, we're going to move into public comments. And again, just remind everybody, we have three minutes. And hey, whether you're singing our praises or whether you're not singing our praises, three minutes, that'll be it. And if you got more after that, we'll handle that accordingly. So all that being said, there were no cards turned in this evening, so we're going to be at a free-for-all, so anyone in the chambers liking to address council, now's your time. Ma'am, I add, as you're coming, no, no, come on, come on. Hold on, hold on. Red light, green light. No, as you come, please. I know, all right. As you will, just your name, address, or district, whichever you're comfortable with.
Okay. Thank you for letting us, giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Catherine Patrick. I live in Karen's District, District 6. And I haven't, I've spoken here before, but it has been probably over a year since I've been to a council meeting. But I was very interested in the modifications to the stadium. And so I really appreciate, I got here about 15 minutes late. I work in Decatur, and so it took me, there was, there's construction, so there's always traffic coming back in the afternoon. But I did hear a lot of people make comments. The only people that's comments I really agreed with were Renee's and Karen's. I appreciate Karen has a background in finance and looking at these types of investments and all the questions that you asked. And then Renee recognizing that people are really struggling. People have been struggling since, you know, 2021, when we had inflation go up to like 9%, maybe 10%, and we haven't seen that since the 80s. And prices have not come down. Now, inflation has come down, but prices haven't. They're finally stabilizing. I watch the housing market all the time because I want to move. And hopefully this year I'll get to move out of a small house. But anyway, I just, I wanted to say that I appreciate your statements. As a citizen and a resident, they're the only two people who commented that reflect my sentiments. And then the only other thing, I wanted to ask a question if anybody, because if this is Major League Baseball, I just Googled, there's like 120 stadiums, or minor league baseball, in the country. And I wondered if anybody had reached out to any other communities to see, you know, what are the improvements that they're going to be required? Because our stadium is pretty much brand new. And we're talking about having to spend $8 million and for stadiums, for communities that are smaller, like Montgomery biscuits. I don't know, I just wondered if, you know, to me, it seems like if communities refuse to pay for this, the baseball teams aren't going to have anywhere else to go. The whole country's struggling, is my point. So we've actually probably had a bigger benefit with all the federal dollars coming in and the property taxes increasing with, you know, with the price of homes and so forth. So I imagine we're doing a lot better than other communities around the country. So thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, do you, I was going to ask, could you address that now, or do you want to wait and maybe address?
Sure, I can address that. So every of the 120 teams are all complying. Examples within the Southern League is both Chattanooga and Knoxville have built, had to build new stadiums in the tune of $70 to $80 million. So everyone is complying. To give others an example, just I was in a meeting last night, and it was last night, where I was talking to the Hoover mayor. They've spent right at $15 to $16 million just on redoing the Hoover Met, just, you know, for just what they're doing there. And I don't even know what the Finley Center was. So it is a cost of doing those things, but others are having to comply at that higher level too, with older stadiums.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else liking to address council?
Margie Daly, Karen's District, Marion Drive. So let me talk about the stadium. The North Carolina is not complying, number one. Number two, President Trump and his administration has said stadiums will no longer be subsidized with tax dollars. They are not economic development for owners of teams to make so much money. And he has many friends that own teams. Okay. So the Anaheim mayor was dealing with the Angels, and the big contract they did, the mayor was made to resign. And the contract was thrown out, and now the Angels will pay in full for their stadium. So I guess we have to pay for that. We're still paying a 2018 bond. We just put out $30 million for the ramps. That's not counting interest on the bonds, fees, and commission, and many other things you passed without going through the account. The Major League Angels, they did DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, with the ladies locker room with no ladies on the team. Or in the Southern League, we have to build a locker room for these phantom ladies. Well, DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, has been in the court system and in at least three district courts, has been proven to be unconstitutional and discriminatory. So the ladies locker room can go. We don't even need to talk about it. It will be January 20th in an executive order. Okay. The third thing, I see Councilman Shore is like the main person on here, and we have an ethics report that he is not supposed to be voting on anything Breland. So why he's the point man, I don't know. Let me get back to my, okay, the maintenance account, we pay half, they pay half, the team has 50 owners, then their non-government agency or NGO, which is the Trash Panda Nonprofit. Okay, so we're paying, the owners get paid, the nonprofit get paid, then they have a trust, also tax-free. This was a special project, you moved it into the general fund, you're using money from our roads, our lights, our traffic signals, maintenance. The city has, besides that, it's only about 10% of the families that can actually afford to go to the stadium maybe once a year. So you guys are doing this for the elite sector, for these private boxes. Beginning, we're supposed to have 14 boxes, you knocked it down to seven, now you want to put seven on top of it. All we got to do is split the walls, put split walls in there, and let them have a little bit smaller, because they are quite elaborate, these suites that we made. Plus, these other stadiums are old. Our stadium is brand new. I mean, you are raping the tax dollars. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anyone else wanting to address council? All right. Saying none, we will close public comments, and we will move into consent agenda and Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee has reviewed the regular and periodic bills. On the consent agenda tonight, we've got appropriations for Thrive Alabama, the Huntsville Botanical Gardens, the Crisis Center of North Alabama, Fantasy Playhouse Children's Theater and Academy, the Legacy Center. And we also have a reimbursement of a lien, a weed lien. We have Public Works Department giving them permission to solicit bids for the right-of-way mowing. We have a donation from propertyroom.com for the Madison Police Department. We've got a donation from S. Eichler for the stained glass program to be deposited in the Senior Center account. And we also have a donation from St. John Paul the Baptist Church for a special event at the Senior Center. And with that, I move to approve.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any comments? Are there any comments? Megan, we talked about this last week. Would you mind just addressing real quick, high level, the item G there, I think, the reimbursement of the weed lien?
Yes. When the council adopted and authorized this weed lien back in '23, it didn't make it to the tax assessor's office until it was about September of that year, which apparently did not leave them enough time to implement it on that year's tax bills. And so in the time between the weed lien was imposed and made it to the tax bill, another gentleman bought the property, he's kept it in compliance, and he asked the city for reimbursement. And we think that due to the lack of notice, that we'd like to recommend reimbursement of this lien.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. All right. No other public, or no other comments? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right. Now we're in the presentation reports. Mayor Finley?
All right. Two quick things, and then Michael's going to come up from engineering and give us a real quick synopsis of our current road projects, just to give you guys an idea where everything stands as we get into this new year. So the two things I have first, on Thursday, we cut the ribbon at the new Madison Community Center. If you see, and I've had several people say, boy, I really like your sweatshirt. I do too. I bought one that day from the Madison Community Center. They're $15. And so our Madison Recreation Group has put that on. But again, very proud of our, of our community center and all that it's going to do for our community. And then from there, on Thursday, we went straight into a weather event. So a couple of things. Jeff Birdwell's in the back from EMA. Each year, our city funds with outside appropriations, our portion of the Madison County EMA, I say, response team and staff. So with that said, when it comes to these weather events, they monitor them, they bring everybody together. If any of you guys watched the press conference, they're the ones that put that on. So again, when things like that happen, we take our liaisons within the city from police, fire, public works, work with Jeff's team to make sure we're in good shape. So thank you, Jeff, for all that you guys do, which then leads me to our teams here in the City of Madison, who I think did a phenomenal job against, along with Steve Haraway from the county commission. As I've said previously, I don't think there was any difference from what happened last year in our preparation or our effort. There was a lot of difference in ice. And once we got ice, and from that, even with that said, both Kent and Steve and teams went up to Tennessee, learned everything they possibly could, went other places. So when this hit, we were as prepared as we could be. And I'm just very appreciative of that team for helping us to work through this as quickly as they did. So then, Michael, with that said, if you'd come on up, I'll let, I'll let Michael give a real quick piece of a couple of what's happening, and then just turn it back over.
That's correct.
Got a couple of handouts for you guys of these slides.
Thanks, sir. Gerald, thank you. I know that was bothering you.
Okay. So our mayor asked me to put together a capital improvement projects update for the several projects that we've got going on right now, some of the ones that we are getting started on, and then some of the ones that'll be coming down, upcoming for the next half year or so. First project that are under construction, Browns Ferry Culvert is getting close to the end. Right now, they're working on building up the roads at the approaches. Part of the issue with that road was there was no good base under that road. So as we're doing this, we want to make sure we've got a good approach, so we're not getting cracking right there at that culvert. Hope to finish this project in March, depending on the weather, kind of thing. 565 flyovers, kind of subject to the weather on that one, too. I talked to the contractor about that one last week. He mentioned that the asphalt they have to use is a special polymerized asphalt, has to be 50 degrees for them to lay that. So need to finish that whenever the weather, weather warms up. Hope to open those. I think now it's March. I've got a call tomorrow with the engineer, AECOM, and those guys. And then Huntsville Browns Ferry Burgreen Roundabout, working on getting the gas mains and telecommunications relocated. Once we get those done, then the site work can start. We're hoping to have Comcast done this week. Talked to North Alabama Gas, they're hoping to be able to come in in February. Any questions about those?
I would say the 565 flyovers, I know they've asked for additional time. I don't think we've offered that to them yet, have we?
Not, no.
Yeah, so no. So I think, you know, pushing for that as early as we can. I know you, as engineers, don't want to say something and then underperform, but, you know, we're still looking at the end of January, beginning of February for that. So if you can continue to help push for that.
We'll, we'll keep pushing them. You know, the weather, you know, the weather is what it is, but.
Sorry, I had one more.
Madison Boulevard repaving, almost complete dump with the repaving part. There's still some signal upgrades, guardrails, that kind of stuff still to go.
On both Browns Ferry Culvert and I-565, how much margin is left in those schedules? And what is the actual projected completion date? Just based on the schedule now. Understand Mother Nature has her own vote.
Well, as Mayor mentioned, we don't have any built-in extra time, or we have another change order for time on flyovers. So right now, it is, you know, it's, it's, like you said, right now, they're, they're looking at needing to be done by February. Browns Ferry Culvert, we don't really have a hard date on that one. They probably have maybe three, four weeks of work to do on that, as soon as they can get back out there. They had really great weather all fall, got a lot of work done. Then it rained, and if you guys know that area, it's just a low spot, it holds water, and then it froze solid last week. So, you know, they're doing the best they can.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Starting soon, projects, we've got, we're going to go back to the Mill Road Stabilization Project. Brought the change order to you guys last, last time. You guys approved that, so they'll be starting that project as soon as the weather allows. Did talk to the contractor about that one. Two, we're not going to do any road closures until Browns Ferry Culvert is opened back up. They might be able to start on some of the bypass road, but they're not going to start any, any road closures for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hughes Mill Portal Intersection, right out here, we're adding some pedestrian function and improved detection for the traffic flow. Once we get the materials, they should be able to start those in the spring. And then the, excuse me, Burgreen Hardeman Intersection, that's a new traffic signal over there at the end of Hardeman Road. And again, we're, we're just waiting. And again, we're just waiting on materials, and we hope to start that one in the summer. Questions about those? All right, going out for bid, right now, we've got the Palmer Park Pedestrian Bridges. That's building the foundations and installing the bridges that will be, that are being fabricated by contact. That's to connect the subdivision, the new part of the park, the old part of the park, the Greenway, all of that. Scheduled to award that bid in January, right into the month. Actually, at the next council meeting. Seagulls and McSill Improvements, that's widening and turn lanes for the new school that opens in 2026. Scheduled, that's out for bid, that will be going out for bid. Hope to award that one in February. And then the Mill Road sidewalks connecting Withers Junction to the Bradford Creek, Bradford-Greenway parking lot. That one has not advertised yet, but hoping to award that one in February also. Okay? And finally, we've got several projects in design phase. First, we have these that are, that are already funded for construction. That's the Balch and Gooch Roundabout, Waltryanna, Gooch Signal and Sidewalk, County Line and Royal Drive Extension Signal, and the Royal Drive Extension, Phase One of the extension. Those are all funded for construction. As we get those finished up, we can start working on right-of-way acquisition, that kind of stuff for that, right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. Balch and Browns Ferry Roundabout, that one's at 90%. We're almost there. Hughes and Old Madison Pike, we're right there. We're just trying to finish out some utility coordination with those guys. Those are already, that project, those projects are already funded for some right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation. Hopefully, we can get construction funding for that next year.
We're at the mid-year budget, maybe?
The mid-year budget, maybe. We'll have to see where we're at on, there's a lot of right-of-way to acquire.
Oh, I know.
For those things. And then finally, just several of the projects that we're, that were funded for design. Palmer Road Bridges, Browns Ferry and Sullivan Intersection, that's going to be possibly some turn lanes. That's something that had been looked at several years ago. Looking at that again. Balch and Mill Intersection, that's one that we're looking at possibly doing a signal there.
Okay, that's, I want, it's impossible to turn left.
Difficult to turn left.
At 5:00. I mean, I, you have to, I, you have to go right and turn around at Mill Creek. So are we looking at possibly a roundabout there or a traffic signal?
It's going to be a traffic signal. There's not, I don't think there's any room to do.
Or a roundabout? I would, I would love a roundabout, personally.
You'd have to take out that whole mill and everything. I don't, I don't think.
So if it's a traffic, or we're just going to say, when it's a traffic signal, do we have like, is that 2025 or 2026? Are you thinking for the traffic signal?
We, we haven't really scoped that idma. When we're going to be able to build it. Right now, we're just trying to get it designed.
Thank you.
Next is Powell and Burgreen Intersection. That's another one to support the schools over there. That's a new signal. And then there's the Mill and Sullivan Intersection, looking at maybe some, at least one turn lane, right turn lanes, and possibly a little bit more over there. That's what I've got.
Couple of questions. So it, just an old data point I had. Roughly intersections, when you're talking about turn signals and all that, the polls are pretty much custom for everyone. It was running about 12-month lead time on, on the polls? Is that?
No, they're more like, at this point, they're more like five, six months.
Okay, all right. And then the first three, you talk about they're 100%, and then you talk about right-of-way acquisition. What do you see, just guesstimate, that timeline as you see walking out? Kind of those next steps?
Doing right-of-way acquisition?
Right-of-way acquisition, getting it out for bid, yada, yada, yada.
The right-of-way acquisition part's a little bit more of a legal thing we get with those guys, and it just depends on how well they want to work with the city, how well they want to negotiate with us. Usually, we can get going pretty good on the utility relocation, but sometimes the telecommunications kind of, kind of gets us behind a little bit on those. For these, Waltryanna and Gooch, probably not a lot of utility relocation to do on that one. County Line and Royal, that, that signal, not a lot of utility relocation on that one. We might not have very much right-of-way on that one either. Balch and Gooch has a little bit more to do.
Be fair to say, maybe spring, summer?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I'd, I'd definitely like to be moving by then on those, yeah.
All right, that's fair.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, counsel, that's all I have.
Okay. Pardon?
All right, next up, we have council district number one.
I just wanted to add to what the mayor said about thanking Public Works and our first responders for everything they did in the snow event. But I also want to thank the people of Madison who stayed home and made their job just a lot easier. Very much appreciate them staying off the road. There was a horrible accident on Memorial Parkway today, early morning. They haven't determined if it's weather-related or not, but a woman was killed and two children were hurt. And I'm just so thankful that our, our people listened and they stayed home. And it's my understanding we're going to have another weather event next week that we have again about a 40% to 60% chance of snow. So I'll just say, please listen to our friends at the EMA, our first responders, the police. Everybody did a great job with communicating that information and to Public Works who put up the appropriate barricades. So thank you for being diligent and staying home. That's all I have.
All right, council district two.
What she said, and that's all I have.
All right, council district three.
No new business.
Council district four.
No new business.
Council district five.
Just want to say thank you to Public Works and their attentiveness, always on duty, always keeping us safe and keeping our roads habitable. Thanks.
And council district six.
I'll just be the chorus on that one, too. Public Works did an awesome job. They had Eastview plowed. I don't know if anybody's been up and down Eastview during the snow, but it's really bad. And so I was very grateful for that. But I'm also grateful for the police, the fire, all those that watched over the city during that event. Always appreciative of all y'all's work. Yeah, I guess I had enough to say during the work session. I'm not going to go any further into any of that. But I will say that of all my constituents, I have yet to have one person come up and tell me yes, vote yes for the stadium. And that's just a fact. So other than that, I hope y'all have a nice evening and stay warm and safe next week.
All right, thank you. And council district seven, so I'll say me, too, me, too, me, too, I don't know how many times. But yeah, I just think it was amazing that within 36 hours, all the roads were cleared. And I say roughly 36. I know somewhere around midday on Saturday, I was able to leave my house and go to the Greenway. And lo and behold, the Greenway was actually cleared. So not exactly sure who did that or whatever, but I did see some, some tire tracks, but many thanks. You know, getting that cleared, and there were quite a bit of folks actually out on the Greenway, which I was surprised, so. But lots of, lots of work, lots of, you know, extra hours by those folks put in to help keep us safe, and so appreciate all that. All right, that being said, we're going to move into board and committee appoint.
Archive the work session.
I do, thank y'all so much.
Make a motion to archive the work session.
I'll second that.
Man, I'll tell you what, I was running through that one. Thank y'all. All right, so yeah, let me, I'll just bring it back up. They made amendment to the agenda earlier on to archive the work session that we had previously. And it sounds like we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No? I'll just add, I appreciate counsel's discussion and looking through all the data. My goodness, it was a lot of data to go through, but I appreciate everybody looking through it, bringing forward your, your thoughts and opinions. And yeah, I think we got a path forward, and we will move out. So with that, I will ask for the vote, please.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And I will just say, I know we've had a little technical difficulties, I think, with City Connect. And talking about IT earlier, they're going to work through that and get, get that archived and posted here probably shortly. So folks wanting to watch it, it'll be out there. All right, now we can go into board and committee appointments, and we got a couple this evening.
I've got two for Construction Board of Appeals. Appointment of Harley Murphy, place one.
All right, any other nominations? Okay, saying none, we will appoint Mr. Murphy to the Construction Board of Appeals, place one, by consensus.
And my second one is Jerry Pennington to Construction Board of Appeals, alternate, place one.
All right, any other nominations? Okay, saying none, we will appoint Mr. Pennington to Construction Board of Appeals, alternate, place one. All right, now we're going to move into public hearings. We have a few tonight. And the first five are resolutions that deal with the assessment of weed liens on the following properties, 100 Petra Drive, 208 Concord Drive, 22 Stone Street, 3721 Sullivan Street, and 129 Autumn Haven Lane. We've been presented with itemized reports showing the cost of removing weed nuisances from these properties. These reports have been previously sent to the owners of the lots. And so now, we're going to step into them one at a time. But we'll do into the public, public hearing on these matters. So first up is Resolution Number 2025-014-R. It is the weed lien on 100 Petra Drive. So is there anyone in the public that would have wished to address the council or address this matter? If you will, please, when you come up, go ahead, come on. Come out, just state your name, district for the record, and or address, if you're comfortable. And you have five minutes.
Well, I'm going to speak on all of them, just because there's like five. It's the same thing. It's weed lien. Margie Daly, District Six.
Awesome.
Sorry, Marion Drive. And we got problems on Marion Drive. Anyway, so these people, you know, you're saying they're lots. So these are investors that have these lots or the actual people? I heard you say it was sent to the lots. So it wasn't actually sent to the people that owned the lots? You know, I just wish, you know, we're a good city, and I wish that instead of like just fining people and throwing these weed liens out, that we had help. Suppose they're senior citizens, but I'm a little confused whether they're homes or just lots that people have invested in. So that, that's my confusion. But I do wish the city would, you know, help people if they need help. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, saying none, we'll close public hearing and, uh... Sorry.
Move to approve.
All right. Sorry, I didn't follow the script.
You're good.
Uh, any discussion? No? So I, I will address the, where I said lots, owners. I said the owners of the lots. And my house is on a lot. So your house is on a lot, L-O-T. Your home address, when you built it, had a lot. So it could be a home, it could be a home on it, it could not be a home on it. At the same time, we sent a notice to the homeowners, and there hasn't been any kind of action on that. I will say, we had earlier an issue where we incorrectly charged the homeowner, and we're now coming back and reimbursing that cost. So we do see areas where, where we have faulted, and we're correcting that. So all of these have been investigated, and at this point, that's why we're having a public hearing. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Robleski and a second by Councilman Shaw. And I don't think we had any discussion other than what I said. So with that, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Now we're going to move into the next public hearing, which is Resolution 2025-015 on 208 Concord Drive, against weed lien. So opening a public hearing, anyone who got comments, want to address? All right, saying none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Robleski and second by Councilman Powell. Any discussion? All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. With that, we're going to move, next Resolution 2025-016, another weed lien for 22 Stone Street. Open the public hearing. Are there any comments from public? All right, saying none, we'll close that public hearing and entertain another motion.
Move to approve, second.
All right, got a motion by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman Shaw. Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And next up, Resolution 2025-018-R, last of the weed liens for 129 Autumn Haven Lane?
You skipped one.
I did skip one, sorry. All right, let me go back one. Resolution 2025-017-R, weed lien for 3721 Sullivan Street. Anyone here in the public want to address counsel on this? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And with that, want to entertain a motion?
Move to approve, second.
All right, got a motion by Councilman Shaw, second by Councilman Powell. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes. Now we can get to 2025-018 Resolution, and last of the weed liens for 129 Autumn Haven Lane. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to address counsel? All right, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve, second.
All right, got a motion by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?[1625.02]
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, we're going to move into Proposed Ordinance 2024-392 for zoning a certain property owned by Clint and Brittany Coggan.
This is a request to zone a property that is 0.73 acres, located at 145 Firestone Drive to R1A. The zoning would take effect upon annexation, and that annexation request is later on in your agenda. This item did go to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is recommending approval. There was no, there were no speakers at the Planning Commission meeting, and staff is recommending approval as well.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this? All right, state your name, district, and you have five minutes.
Margie Daly, Karen's District, Marion Drive. I'm just curious, so we're rezoning this to low-density residential, from what? How many homes can they build on this? And I see AG in there in the middle, R1, R1A. So we got AG and R1A, is this that middle piece? They're going to make that low-density residential, so that's more than one family? And it's in between two agricultural lots? Or we're getting rid of the agricultural? Or it's just next to one? Is it, it's those two pieces with the red lines? I'm confused about the drawing.
I want to make sure I get all your questions, so.
So I'm just curious, what, what is coming from going to, is it more families on that little lot, and is it in between two agricultural lots, which can cause problem with the drainage and the wastewater? We've found that out in the city many times on Walt Triana and Reserve, Town Madison. I mean, we are on a flood plain, like a hundred-year flood plain, I'm not saying flood zones, but when you start putting homes and, you know, in between agricultural lots, there could be problems with the, which we've had many, and it winds up costing the taxpayers to fix it. I mean, we're fixing when the cemetery was flooded over here from the Everstet DEI project in the back here, which I'd like to see be all Alabamians instead of moving people from other countries and other states.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you if you can.
Thank you, that's all I need to know.
All right, thank you. Mary Beth, did you get those questions? All right, are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing no others, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mary Beth, would you mind addressing those questions?
The, the property in question, and I'll just point, oops, turn the puppy on. The property in question is this one right here on the north side of Firestone Drive.
The one with the call-out?
Yes, sir. And it is currently in the county, so it doesn't have any zoning. They're requesting annexation, which is later in your agenda. They're requesting R1A. It is developed with a single-family house, it will remain as a single-family house. It is surrounded by other single-family houses that just happen to be in the county. I think that answers those questions.
Yeah, does for me. Any other comments from council? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Next item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2024-394. This is also a request to zone single-family property. This one is slightly larger at 0.79 acres. It is at 174 Firestone Drive, not related to the other one, they just coincidentally came in at the same time in the same cycle, and this item would also be upon annexation. And you can see, it is on the south side of Firestone Drive, and this one is directly north of property that is zoned agriculture. That's a single-family property. Back in the day, whenever property got annexed into Madison, for some reason, it got zoned AG, even though that's a non-conforming property, because it's a single-family house that's not on three acres, and that's what AG zoning requires. So as we've been annexing in property in the last ten-plus years, we've been recommending that it be zoned to the appropriate zoning category for the density, the size of the lot and the neighborhood. So in this case, this would be recommended to be R1A. Went to the Planning Commission, there were no comments, the Planning Commission, Planning Commission and staff are supporting this request.
All right, thank you, ma'am. With that, we're going to open the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to address council? Okay, saying none, we'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
And, yeah, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, second.
All right.
Jump ball.
We got a motion by Councilman Powell, and we have a second by Councilwoman Spears.
I do have one question. Do the people that are living at 174, do they own that AG property that is just south of them, or is it?
No.
By the people that are at the R1A that is in between those two?
No, it's a separately owned property. They're all individually, it's a, those properties are all developed with single-family homes, they're independent owners.
Okay, and the ones that are AG, those are in the county?
No, the ones that are AG are in the city limits. So when they got annexed into the city, they got zoned AG, which is similar to skyline acres over by Slaughter. Almost all of that is zoned AG, although it's an inappropriate zoning given the size of the lots, but that was the way the city did it for a long, long time, as was the subdivision out in Limestone County that we annex in, Morris Estates, that gets annexed in periodically.
Right, can we revisit that?
Yeah.
Because that's a quite bit lower tax rate than.
Interestingly, when we've had conversations with the tax assessor about people changing zoning, just because the zoning changes, their property taxes do not change.
Really?
It's based upon the development of the property. And so that really doesn't make a difference. What does make a difference is if one of these properties wanted to refinance, the banks typically will want a verification letter that a property complies with zoning. By definition, they don't comply with zoning because they're not three-acre lots, lots. So one of our goals, when we finish the comp plan process and we get through the zoning code process, is to revisit the topic of rezoning these AG lots that are inappropriately zoned, because it, it's a disadvantage to those property owners. AG setbacks are much larger than R1A setbacks, for example, and they're just non-conforming. So by changing the zoning, we would actually be helping them to maximize the use of their land and bring a lot of them into a conforming status, which helps them with refinancing.
Excellent, I support that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll go into the next up, which is Resolution 2025-020-R.
Good evening. The Revenue Department has one item for a public hearing this evening. We have Resolution Number 2025-020-R, and this is a request for a non-premises beer and wine license from Ted's Madison LLC doing business at Ted's Barbecue for their location at 8780 Madison Boulevard. The reason that this business is applying for a non-premises beer and wine license at this time is because they would like to add these items on the menu. Everything is in order for this request to be considered.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We'll open the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to address council on this matter? All right, saying none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Councilwoman Robleski, second by Councilman Powell. I almost called you Councilman Shaw.
Lot better looking than that.
Well, yeah. All right, any discussion? Can I get a vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go into department reports, and first up is Engineering.
Okay, first I have Resolution Number 2025-022R, it's an acceptance of Bradford Station, Phase Three into the City of Madison Maintenance Bureau.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Does this meet all the requirements?
Meets all the requirements.
Okay, thank you.
I know, she didn't even get a chance to say anything.
Was it Teddy's turn to ask that?
Appreciate her taking care of it.
All right, good. Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Next is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-023, amending Section 32131 of the Madison City Code of Ordinants entitled Parking in Conformity with Established Regulations. By prohibiting parking on a portion of Lifeway Street, this is the first reading. This was brought to us by the church there on the corner of Lifeway and Sullivan Street, just a little bit north of Madison Boulevard. There's a median in the road, you can see it here. Parking on the street right here would preclude emergency vehicles from being able to access that part of Lifeway Street. Discuss this with fire chief and the police chief, and we've, we've talked about it a little bit with Teddy, too, and bring this to you guys as the first reading.
Okay, so this first reading, I don't think we need a vote on it, right? Not yet? Nope, nothing? All right, cool. Thank you. All right, next up, facilities and grounds.
First we have Resolution 2025-021R, award of bid 2024-014ITB for the dumpster service for the city facilities to Waste Away Group Incorporated doing business as WM at prices listed on the price sheet per dumpster per month, and this should be paid out of general fund account.
Move to approve, second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Next we have an ordinance number 2025-024, authorizing the mayor to execute a one-year lease agreement extension with the tenants at 28720 Huntsville Browns Ferry Road for $1,500 a month, and this is the first reading.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next up is planning. Teddy, you didn't say it.
He is my favorite person.
My goodness.
All right, I was going to start to worry.
You know you're my favorite person, I didn't mean to say it.
All righty, we have Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-001, and this is for the annexation of 145 Firestone Drive, which we were just talking about earlier. This property is occupied by a home that consists of about just over 2,700 square feet, and Planning Commission and staff are recommending annexation.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Councilwoman Robleski, and we'll just give this one to Councilman Shaw. All right, any discussion? All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember, Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-002, also for annexation of property, this one at 174 Firestone Drive on the south side. This property is occupied by a single-family home just under 2,800 square feet. Planning Commission staff are recommending approval.
Move to approve, second.
I, all right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?